Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 9th. To order, thank you all for being here, especially to our guests for coming and participating in your city. I will kick us off with our invocation and pledge. Ms. Mack, if you would lead us in the invocation, we'll follow that by the pledge allegiance. I would invite you to stand with us and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let's pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, shout out God who got along. Father, we want to continue today, first of all, to take you. Thank you. Thank you for giving us your Son Jesus, who died on the cross and the finished work that he did, gives us a right to eternal life, to get to you. Father, we ask you now, your holy presence, to come and give your own and be with us as you need, to do the business of this city of Hartsville that we all love so much. Father, we ask you that we continue on the path that we're going, to grow forward and go forward together, in every section, every service, and for every citizen. Father, we ask that you keep your loving arms of protection over the city of Hartsville, for all of our first responders, all of our staff, all of our council, and all of our residents. There are many things happening in the world, and we pray for peace. We pray for peace, Lord, and we ask that you give us peace. Follow peace and pursue peace. That's what you say in your word. And Father, if we do things that are pleasing on your side, then we will all live in a better world. So we want to say thank you again, in the name of your Son Jesus Christ. You pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America, and to every family which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, for the civility pledge, please join us in that, if you would. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city. And I wanted to take a moment to, we can sit. A council member lost his grandfather yesterday, Mr. John Schumate, and if you would speak on this, Bruno, real briefly?
We need to have a moment of silence.
That's what I was gonna say. If we have a moment of silence for the individuals.
If we don't mind, let's stand up and have a moment of silence for Mr. Schumate and this Milgred Bruno, please.
Thank you all for that. Please keep your hearts with the families and their friends. Lost two, two strong members of the Hartsville community recently, and thank you, everyone, for that. Now, moving right on to item three, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting, please say so by indicating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. And that brings us to our proclamations. And April is officially unofficially proclamation month, and we have a bunch of them. So I will get right to it. We will start off with congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness day. Is anyone here to receive this proclamation? Okay. Well, I will briefly read the highlights. Whereas one in every 2,500 pregnancies are diagnosed with a congenital diaphragmatic hernia, better known as CDH. CDH occurs when a baby's diaphragm fails to fully form, allowing abdominal organs into the chest cavity and preventing lung growth. And whereas since 2000, it's estimated that over 700,000 babies have been born with the condition, with only 50% of those babies surviving. And while 1,600 babies are born with the conditions in the United States each year. And whereas CDH is as common as spina bifida and cystic fibrosis, however, very few people know about or are aware of it. And whereas raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring out acceptance and support for those suffering with it, and will help advocate for urgently needed medical research and advances. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville and the State of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim April 19th, 2024, as congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness day, and urge all citizens and agencies, public and private institutions, to commit our community to learn more about this condition, support those who are affected. We can certainly get that to relevant parties. Okay. The two of these are PD Coalition. Do you mind coming forward to accept these, please?
I'm Pam Johnson. I'm the volunteering community education coordinator for PD Coalition.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
My pleasure. We will start off Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault affects adults and children in the PD region not only as victim survivors, but also as family members, loved ones, friends, neighbors, or coworkers of a victim. And whereas sexual assault is one of the most devastating crimes in our society today. And whereas victims often suffer lifelong pain from physical injury and serious emotional trauma. And whereas the 2024 observance of Sexual Assault Awareness Month encourages people to learn more about sexual violence and its prevention, and how to help survivors heal from this personal violation. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this month, April 2024, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all of us to work together to prevent sexual assault, ensure and ensure a life free from harm for the residents of Hartsville. It's my pleasure to present this to you. Thank you, too. Do you want to do a photo? You want to do both of them at the same time? Okay. I know you have some comments, too. The next is for child abuse prevention. Whereas South Carolina's future prosperity and quality of life depend on the healthy development of more than 1.1 million children residing in communities in our state, including 13,950 in Darlington County. And whereas preventing childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, must be a priority that requires everyone to support the physical, emotional, and social and educational well-being of all children. And whereas statewide and community prevention programs serve as proven and effective ways to reduce child abuse and neglect, no matter the geographic region, race, ethnicity, or economic status. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that build strong children and families. And in this year, there were 8,000 substantiated Child Protective Services investigations involving over 14,000 children in the state, and 197 investigations involving 416 children in our county in substantiated cases of abuse and neglect. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves, protecting the quality of life for every child. So you do very important and very difficult work, and we all appreciate it very much for what you do for our community and our people.
Do it without your help, especially yours. I wanted to thank you personally because from what I understand, the Hartsville Young, I can't remember the name of the group, Hartsville.
Young Professionals?
Yes. They gathered some donations for us for Easter, and from what I understand, you got us some donations as well. So we couldn't do it. Christmas, Fire Department, they're not here for us to thank, but the Fire Department assists us with Christmas presents, Dancing with the Stars. We could not do anything without the help of Hartsville. So we do appreciate everything that you guys do for us. And also, I want to say, April 24th is Wear Denim Day. So that is an honor of 18-year-old girl that was in Italy in 1992 that was sexually assaulted, judged throughout the case because he said that her jeans were too tight and that she had to have taken them off herself. So in honor of her, we're asking everybody, wear denim on April 24th and post those pictures on social media, please.
Oh, where the tightest ones I could find?
Where the daisy doves?
I would imagine that most of us in the room are well aware of the PD Coalition and the work that they do, but if you're not, I really encourage you to find out, because they do, like I said, it's very important and very, very difficult work for the people of people of Hartsville. Nurses Week. Anyone here to receive this? All right, let me hit the highlights. Whereas there are 70,000 registered nurses, 10,000 nurse practitioners, and 12,000 licensed professional nurses in the state, and 5.3 million nurses nationally, that are all the cornerstone of patient care, but leaders in improving the quality of care. And whereas nurses at the Thaddeus Leiby Development Center play a pivotal role in delivering compassionate care to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities who require extensive care, which leaves them relying on caregivers and medical equipment for some of the simplest activities of daily living. And whereas nurses at the Leiby Center improve the quality of life of residents and their families by providing essential life-sustaining care that allows them to have the connections needed to thrive. And whereas this year marks the 70th anniversary of the annual celebration to raise awareness of the vital role nurses play in our society, which ends on the birthday of Florence Nightingale, now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th of this year as Nurses Week in Hartsville, and to recognize our nurses for their excellence, knowledge, compassion, and kindness, with special gratitude to nurses of the Leiby Center for their devotion and invaluable contributions to the lives and residents of their families. Next one is Pope in Hartsville. Would the Board of the Child and Family Resource Center like to come forward for this? It's a special honor to present this proclamation for y'all and recognize the work that you do. For those of you who don't know, this is the Child and Family Resource Foundation that operates here in Hartsville, has a facility on East Home in Laurel Oak. I'll get right to it. Whereas grief is natural and healthy, is a natural and healthy response to the death of a loved one or the loss of something an individual holds dear treasures. And whereas there are thousands of deaths every year in Hartsville and surrounding communities, leaving behind countless family members, friends, and loved ones to cope with the void in their lives. And whereas grief resulting from disasters such as COVID-19, the death of a friend, colleague, or pet, is often unrecognized and unacknowledged by others, and therefore experienced without a network of support. And whereas cultural traditions, religions, religious and individual family and community mourning practices, along with knowledge and understanding of the grieving process, contribute to a healing environment and improve mental and physical wellbeing, following all forms of loss and grief. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of April 27th of this year as Pope in Hartsville, and encourage all citizens to be conscious and supportive of those surrounding us experiencing loss as they heal through the journey of grief. So thank you so much for the work that you do. Would you have any comments?
Just the awareness, that while death is a huge part of grief, that's what we've come to learn through our work and our journey at Child and Family, is that the stories of our people, loss really does, whether we're talking divorce for children, whether we're talking parents, you know, separated from their children. There's so many things. Job losses we saw in COVID produced huge transition in grief for our community, and that's why we exist, to bring hope to our community. So thank you very much, city, for coming along beside us to proclaim hope in Hartsville. This is our 10th year providing camps for children and families, and that will be on April the 27th. So if you have a family member or loved one that's experiencing grief and loss, we invite you to be a part of. It's a free event for the community.
Awesome. Well, thank you, too, for the work that you do. Super important.
Thank you so much.
Top it off here, they gave us a special little note from the children from the center with the key to hope?
Key of hope.
Key of hope. Just wanted to read this real quick. How beautiful are the feet of the ones who bring good news? Thank you for bringing good news of hope and healing to children and other families of Hartsville. Well, you are very welcome. We appreciate all that you do. Oh, this is you. Are you coming up here? This is an important one. This is to recognize Professional Municipal Clerks Week. For all of you who don't know, the clerk is the one that sort of holds this place together. Obviously, Manager Moore, you do a lot, but without, without her, we'd be a mess. So it's my, it's my pleasure to recognize you with this one. Let me, let me read some of the highlights here. This is, this proclamation is to recognize and honor the valuable contributions that municipal clerks make to cities and towns in South Carolina. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and is the oldest office among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the municipal clerk is the only municipal staff role that is required by state law, regardless of a city's size or form of government, such that all 271 cities and towns in South Carolina are required to have a clerk. And whereas Hartsville City Clerk Andrea Bose Crenshaw plays a critical and varied roles to support the mayor, city council, city staff, and the public, has pledged to be ever mindful of her neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas regardless of city size, municipal clerks have seen their roles and responsibilities expand with changing times. With advancements in software and hardware, municipal clerks have become increasingly adept and skilled at using technology to prepare materials for meeting agenda packets, to record meeting minutes, and to manage public records, and so much more than that. And whereas municipal clerks get their professional training from the South Carolina Municipal Finance Officers, Clerks, and Treasurers Association, and affiliate organization of MASC, and then International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville and the State of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of May 5th to May 11th of 2024 as 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and to recognize and honor the valuable contributions that our city clerk, Andrea Bose Crenshaw, makes to our city. Thank you so much. All of the... Ms. Mack, this is Fair Housing Month. Civility is on for the housing authority. Would you accept this one? Whereas every year, the Housing Urban Development proclaims the month of April as Fair Housing Month to commemorate the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 68. And whereas the state enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, which guarantees the right of every person to live where they choose, regardless of their race, color, national origin, sex, religion, familial status, or disability. And whereas the State of South Carolina must certify each year that it will affirmatively further fair housing in local governments, as a condition of receiving CDBG funds, must certify to the state and to the Housing Urban Development Authority that they will take proactive steps to affirmatively further fair housing. And whereas the City of Hartsville desires that all of its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound living environment. And whereas the City of Hartsville rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or familial status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. Whereas April is recognized nationally as Fair Housing Month because it presents an ideal time to focus on fair housing issues in our community, examine local practices which may be limiting fair housing choices, and undertake meaningful actions. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. And specifically want to thank you for all the do, the help that you provide our citizens on an individual basis to help them find the housing and other services they need. When I have someone ask me for help, having to find, someone asks me where to find help, this is who I call, every time, and she always has an answer. So thank you for all you do for the citizens of Hartsville.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. This is for Firefighters Day, and I'm super glad to see you guys made it back safe and sound. Does anybody want to volunteer to come forward to receive this?
I don't know. I don't know.
Chief says, all y'all go. I'm gonna sit here. Good, good. Amen. For any of you that weren't here, right before the meeting started, all their radios went off and they went running out for, what'd y'all have to go do? Yeah, okay, but it obviously was a small issue. Y'all took care of it. That's because they're good. That's because that's how good they are. So to honor you guys, let me read this proclamation. Whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the day of the annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency services personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our community, an average of 80 firefighters courageously makes the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend starts the weekend following International Firefighters Day on May 4th. And whereas it is of major importance that we increase our efforts to reduce deaths, injuries, and property losses from fire. And whereas on October 16th, 2001, President George W. Bush approved legislation requiring the American flag to be lowered to half-staff on all federal buildings and to include the U.S. Capitol and the White House, as well as buildings in our local community to memorialize fallen firefighters. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville and the State of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim May 4th and 5th of 2024 as Fallen Firefighters Memorial Days, and May 4th specifically as Firefighters Day. And Hartsville and pursuant to the legislation signed into law by President Bush, that all flags are to be flown at half-staff on all city government buildings on May 4th and 5th, and encourage all citizens to remember the past firefighters who gave their lives, serving our community, honor the retired firefighters who dedicated their lives to protecting us all, and show support and appreciation to the firefighters who continue to protect us all throughout the year. So thank you for all that you do, guys. Can't say it enough. All right, thanks. So thank you again, everyone, for being here, for those proclamations. So we have no one sign up for public comment, so we will move right on to the manager's update. Mr. Manager, what you got for us?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of updates for you guys. So first off, I just want to let you guys know that we just released, found out today that we are the chosen by Arbor Day Foundations as Tree City USA of 2023. So we have now another USA, Tree City USA this time. So it's all done, of course, to the work of our fantastic public service staff, and of course, our citizens. Couldn't do it without you guys, especially our Arborist, Stephen Wild, who's not here tonight, and Public Services Director Phil Batte. Thank you so much for what you guys do. Appreciate that. And then just a couple of updates for you guys. You do have a rather large calendar in front of you. We did manage to print it with the smallest font possible, though. You do need to get your readers out if you need it. Looking at a couple of you. But please look at that for anything going on. And a couple of updates coming up. We do have a chats and cheers on April 16th, 6th and 7th. It's a Main Street event. Please come out and support our Main Street businesses. It's at Coke University Davidson Lawn. And then the joint county, it's time for another one. We just did one, but it's time for the joint county city dinner that we have. It's going to be April 29th at 6:00 p.m. at the Grand Old Post Office in Pearl Street, Darlington, South Carolina. So please let Madam Clerk know if you have anyone who's to sign up, but that's another great event for us to get together with our fellow cities and county to talk about what's going on in cities.
For Main Street, is the rain location in Davidson Hall? Do you know, off the top of your head? All right. Thank you.
A couple of other things just to be aware of. We are planning on a budget workshop the week of the April 29th. We're still on track for that. This year, we are neck-deep in budget, so I'm sorry, I haven't seen you guys in a while, but we are dealing with numbers all day, every day. And the last thing, we are going to be looking at the recent open carry law. So if you guys are not aware, the open carry law just came into effect. It does have some regulations for government buildings and facilities. We are looking at appropriate signage to just make sure that everyone is safe and taken care of, but also protecting their constitutional right. So just one of the things, we are navigating that right now. We are still seeking clarification on a few things of other cities right now, because there are a couple of gray areas that we're trying to narrow down. But one of the things, those are being looked at right now, and we are going to be putting up some additional signage across different campuses. So just don't be aware, alarmed when we see those. Any questions for any of that? Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Ray.
Great. Easy peasy. Thank you very much. For the consent agenda, thanks again to all the staff for preparing those reports and keeping us up to date and apprised of what's going on. We will move right on to our one item of unfinished business, a second reading of ordinance 4468. Mr. Manager, if you would publish the ordinance by title and presentation?
Yes, sir. It's a public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4468, an ordinance to lease the property at 149 West Carolina Avenue to Darlington County Humane Society. And for just your clarification, that is the rehab store, retail therapy downtown Carolina.
And it's a renewal?
It's a renewal.
All right. Before we have any discussion, is there a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance 4468?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, public hearing. I will now open the public hearing for 4468. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Nobody's jumping. One more chance. Hearing none, I'll now close the public hearing for ordinance 4468. And now, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance 4468. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance 4468, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Ordinance 4468 passes, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping me in line. That is our only item of unfinished business. Moving on to resolutions and new business. 042401, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's approval to apply for South Carolina Department of... Yes, sir. It's approval to apply for South Carolina Department of Archives and History SCDAH grant. And for your information, it is, we are looking at seeking reimbursement for some Lotton Park repairs, as I mentioned in my email to you guys. I incorrectly said City Hall, but it's Lotton Pavilion. We're seeing some significant water damage from the doors on the backside of it near the deck. That water off the lake is hitting those doors and it's starting to drip down. So when we opened it up, there's a lot more damage. We're getting quotes for that right now. So Lotton Pavilion is closed currently. We are seeking quotes. We'll bring it back to you guys when we need further action on it. But this is for seeking reimbursement to fifty percent of that.
Cool. Very good. Before questions, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution four twenty-four oh-one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none will take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution four twenty-four oh-one, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution four twenty-four zero one is approved. Moving right along to number two. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's resolution oh four twenty-four oh-two. Approval for authorization for the city of Hartsfield to provide a letter of support for the infrastructure improvements for potential workforce development housing, or project, housing project. And as a presentation, the project itself is for eighty units behind, on Washington Street, actually behind Goodwill, across from, behind Lowe's, next to the Humane Society that's being built. We get projects for this all the time. We get requests for any type of support for different tax credit housing developments. This is for low to middle income. Different affordable housing, obtainable housing, as they call it now. And so what they've sought is some sort of, any type of support the city can give. That can be in fund, actually giving them money, or in infrastructure improvements, which we typically have to do anyway for any type of new development with lift stations or with sewer and water being put in. They did come to us in seeking this for points. It's something that is in our strategic investment zone, the plan that we have for affordable housing within that area. But again, it's up to council discretion if they want to attribute any points. It's just a letter of support. It does not mean the project is going forward. It just means the city is willing to make these infrastructure improvements should the project be awarded at the federal level.
Okay, we hear a motion to approve resolution oh four twenty-four oh-two. Before we have any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I wanted to, you said it was beside the, beside the Humane Society, but it's across the street.
It's across the street. On Washington Street. So Washington Street continues on to that cul-de-sac. So it's actually that farmland that's back there, that almost abuts Swift Creek. This is phase one of the potential project. This is eighty units. They want to do additional ninety units on the property that adjacent abuts Swift Creek for a total of one hundred and seventy units. This is middle-class housing, as we're talked about, similar projects behind the Walmart to give some high-density apartment options for people trying to move to Hartsfield.
And I asked, instead of asking the question again, I asked Daniel today, it's similar to the ones behind Walmart, but also to the gardens behind or beside the landmark. You know, they're nice-looking places.
So it's not government subsidized?
It is government subsidized, but that's the, they've really changed their tactics and how they do things. So you recall there are Section Eight housings that have been in the past that are there for that use. They are really getting after more mainstream kind of apartment complex. If you take a look at it, it looks nothing different than a traditional apartment complex. It has a amenity center. It has a, you know, welcome center to it. These are designed to be, look nice because cities need that for attraction to what's going on, but also provide a needed housing option for people who cannot afford traditional housing as it goes on. There are options for, in the Hartsfield Gardens Apartments complex, there are actually regular rate, market rate apartments. They just have to host a portion of those apartments are for the affordable housing. This one is going to have a similar effect. So it's going to have affordable housing as a component for it, but it predominantly will be dictated for people of the middle class.
And Daniel assured me we'd have streetlights on this one.
Yes.
Location option, or are they set on the area you just referred to?
They are. So again, these things are approached to us every year. We get a request for, typically with city-owned property. These two properties that are being looked at are actually privately owned, and they are zoned appropriately for the multifamily use. So it's, this is the location they've chosen to go after this year. It changes kind of as we go. Most recently, if you guys recall, out on one fifty-one near Bay Road subdivision, there was a request on one of the properties owned by the nuisance that came in. There was a request for workforce housing on that property, and we did not get the credits for that, but they did not request any assistance from the city. So these things happen all the time, and whether or not the city is involved or not is completely up to you guys. For instance, there is another application right next door to this property in between it and the Goodwill. And there's also an expansion project that's being requested for the Hartsfield Crossing Apartments that we really don't have any impact on it, especially if it's privately-owned property and zoned appropriately. So these things happen, do in the background. We just don't have any say until they actually get awarded by the federal government. Then we can come in and apply our zoning and building official and make sure they're meeting all the criteria for our building standards and also our zoning criteria.
And I'll say, I've been, I'm sorry, I was just saying, I've been, I've appreciated the developer that Daniel and I have been on the phone with. We have a lot of meetings. She's, she's been on the ball about just engaging with us and going through the process and asking questions and stuff instead of barreling ahead. They, they're also, I don't remember, they're in the Carolinas, so this is not somebody off in Timbuktu that's just gonna, you know, plop down the apartments and we never talk to them again. So that was one of the differentiating factors with this particular group as opposed to a lot of the, sometimes we just get handed a drawing and, and, you know, they're like, you want it or not, then that's it. These, these people have been different.
Well, this group, another difference is that they actually manage the properties that they build. So they are not just a build and then they leave, similar to Hartsfield Crossing, where they built it and then they left. This is the development firm that stays with their project through the life of the project, and they manage the rentals as well. So it's a full kind of a turnkey operation for them. They have several projects. If you see the link I sent you a couple of months ago, they have several projects that they are still actively managing. Over twenty-two hundred, or twenty-two hundred housing units that they built.
Councilman Delaime? Yeah, we talked earlier about this, so let's talk about the letter of support. Does this letter of support, I guess, is requested by them or something that we offer?
It's requested by them. It's not something that we have to give at all.
Does this letter of support ties us to any kind of particular funds or obligation?
So what this letter does is it, it says that we will be willing to invest in infrastructure. In this case, now, we could have, a letter of support could have, for instance, said we want to give them half a million dollars or something like that. But in this case, we're looking at our infrastructure in the area, what we deem that's going to be needed anyway if they were to build the units of the size. We're talking about one hundred and seventy units plus additional potential forty-two next to it, and then development behind Bojangles as well, which is a forty-acre development. So we need improvements to this area anyway to handle the overall increase in volume from water and sewer. And so this is something that we would be willing to do. If anyone approached us with another project, we might be wanting to do the same thing. In this case, they just get tax credits for it.
Okay, second question is, based on the, I guess, the document that you sent us a couple of months ago, it said this group, KGC, this group wants to build a table house for entry and mid-level employees. So would that still, we're talking about, or mixing gum, really?
We, so Hartsfield is in a bit of a, we need housing. We need stock. We need housing of all types. We need housing for Sunoco as an executive, for executives at Sunoco. We also need housing for people who work for the city, people who work for different agencies. So this fills a need that we need across the city. There are middle-class homes being built. I would say the more of the mid-tier level, but right now, we need, we have a deficit in our workforce housing.
How can we, how can they guarantee that they won't leave after they build? You know, they didn't manage the property.
So we can't guarantee that. So again, that's why we're, we're kind of deliberate in what infrastructure improvements we want to make. For instance, that's why I didn't suggest waiving tap fees. That's direct money. That's a cost to us. That is an option for you guys under a strategic investment plan. You can waive up to our tap fees, and also there's fifty percent of other costs associated with it according to our SIZ plan. But overall, this is improvements that need to be made to the area anyway. So it's a relatively low-risk investment for us to seek additional housing. But end of the day, these projects, these projects can come regardless of our involvement. If it's zoned appropriately, which this is R two, and there's also the, this is in this planning and zoning. This is in the planned unit development as well. Yeah, so this allows this type of development. So it's, unless city council wants to take that up, this is, these things can come. So this is a high-density housing unit. It gives potentially one hundred and seventy new units to the city, which is much needed.
And let me take my last statement back. So these properties are gonna be like a, not totally like a, I'm trying to say multi-dwelling apartment townhouse, have you guys in the plan?
Sure, yeah. So it is pure apartments. I believe there are two, up to two or three bedrooms. No townhomes. These are apartments. Full apartments, yes, sir.
That's my life.
All right, let's back.
Dan. So you said that Section Eight, they would have a portion of affordable housing that was asked about. Do you know if they will have their own affordable housing? See, Section Eight comes from HUD through the Housing Authority. But we have several apartments such as Swift Creek, Forest Ridge. A lot of apartments have their own.
Right.
You cannot take it from that apartment complex and take it to another place.
Right, I understand.
So do they have any of those?
I believe the tax structure, what they're applying for, is going to be located specifically on this location, so it will be able to be shareable across the board. So there won't be any, you won't be able to kind of like feed to a bank.
Right.
Yeah. It will be, this is for this site specifically.
That's why I asked the question because that's the difference between Section Eight and then that facility itself having its own HUD assistance. That cannot be taken from one place to another. With Section Eight, you can go from one place to another, one state to another. But I just want, I just wanted to make that clarification. Number two. You said that Hartsfield Crossing was looking at some expansion over there?
So we, we became aware that there are several other projects across the state, and there's three in Hartsfield currently. And so again, it depends on who contacts us first and who asks for things. There was another question before about, is this something that is essentially favoritism since we have one group that's asked for it and the others haven't? The others are more than welcome to ask, and city council, up to city council discretion if they want to invest in or not. But that is purely, if it's on private property, we as a city don't have any say unless it's zoned otherwise.
So do we as a city have a right to say what has happened to us in the past before they go forward?
So the, the catch there is that they are building anything new, we certainly do have an impact on what they do. So we can step in and do things if it's going to be any improvements to the area. So that's something we can leverage as we move forward, especially if there's some site improvements that were not done on a previous project. We can certainly look at that when they go into a new phase.
Yes, because that, that was pitched to us, I think, because I had such a strong voice about that and knowing that they bought the road and they tried to get, give it to the city, and we didn't want it. And then they put lamp posts out, and the lamps never lit up, and they were supposed to put eighteen lamp posts in the fairway. I call it the fairway, but the median for from Fifth Street out to Fourth Street. And those never got done. And so to this day, it is still very, very, very dark. And I want to make sure that before they do anything else, that they correct that.
Sure, I agree. I agree. And that's with, that's a different development. That's with the Hartsfield Crossing development. This is completely separate company.
Yeah, I understand that.
But we will, we, we don't, you know, fool me once.
But you said Hartsfield Crossing may want to go in there.
Oh, I'm just letting you know, that's, that's the word we got. Now, I have not, again, have any solid plans. These are not required to give to us unless they're they're having approached us about anything. That's why it was very important when this group engaged with us that we stay engaged with them because it helps us offset some of those issues going forward.
And where is this group headquarters?
Tennessee, I believe. They build towards southeast is what they're focused on.
We just need to highlight what workforce housing is. It is not technically low-income. We have educators in this town that are living, that are sharing living space. So we need to be mindful of what our opinion of that is.
The best word for it is obtainable housing. And it's a, it's a scalable thing. And so, yes, we have teachers, police officers, firefighters, my own staff, who would benefit from something like this.
And have, Brian, can you finish? Did you have any square footage of the, like, the apartments?
I didn't get that far into it because, again, this is, until it's approved, they don't go into things, but it's eighty units. There is a site plan that you should have received to spell it out. It does have an immediate center in, we have a workout center involved and a welcome center to it, along with some stormwater, and it does phase into another ninety unit onto Swift Creek. So I'm not sure exactly the square footage. Again, this has to all still make it through the very arduous process of getting the tax credits, and they're up against a multitude of other projects going on, including, we have three in South, in Hartsfield. There's many, many more in the state. They only award some. And we, every year, these are applied for, every single year, and it just depends on whether or not you get them or not.
Well, we, we certainly need housing for the reason that Mayor Pro Tem stated. We have teachers and police officers and I imagine some firefighters and just every profession. The rental market in Hartsfield is, especially in the historic Butler District, is low, and what's left is pretty bad.
Well, one of the next items coming up is, one of the studies that we're looking at doing is focusing specifically on housing because that's something that we are very interested in improving. And so I think that with things like this, probably if we start showing that we are positive and promote these type of developments of all types, of all types, single-family, multifamily. We're appropriate and we're, when reasonable and appropriate, and also makes sense. That is very important. And when we have a hand, when we have a seat at the table, that's when, like those we like with this group, when we have a seat at the table, we can really work towards controlling these things and helping with it. When you don't, and things keep happening, that's when problems arise. So we are highly engaged with them and anyone who wants to come with these things.
That's good because over on Hennessy Lane, I wasn't aware of it, like, in, and it looks like an apartment complex. Well, it's not a complex, but it's like townhouses. They look like they're in Charlotte. You wouldn't know it just passing by the street, but you drive up in there. I'm like, wow.
Valid comments. Within the, want to be careful about the context of the resolution. Is there any other?
I do have a question. Has the developer invested anything at Hartsfield at this point, or they just, do they, do they own the property?
They are. I believe the property is under contract by them, dependent on, I believe, the awarding of this tax credits. So they do plan to invest it. It is a, I believe, under the paperwork, it's an eighteen million dollar investment into the city.
And it's already in the city. They won't have to annex any.
No, it's, it's completely in the city, and it's in a, as a Fourth Street area, of course, that brings up, you know, other issues that we would deal with, with traffic and whatnot. But that last area is the last, along with the area behind Bojangles, a forty acres area, is the last untapped area on Fourth Street for the most part. And so we are interested in what goes in there because something will happen. It's developable land. And so, but they are under contract.
I have a question. So how contingent is this project on these tax credits? Like, if they don't get the tax credits?
It's a hundred percent contingent on it. These projects live and die on those tax credits. That is how, that is how these companies make money. I mean, that is, that is, that is how they make money. It is a business. And so it is a hundred percent reliable, reliant on those tax credits. And what we're doing, I mean, we're, we're looking at about ninety-five thousand dollars worth of infrastructure improvements to lift stations and whatnot. That's only worth one point. Up to eight points is for, eight, or five points for eight thousand dollars per unit. This is a six hundred and forty thousand dollar investment. And while if we were to have eighty units on a tap fee, yes, you could probably get there if you look at those, but that's not something that I was interested in looking at for you guys. I think it's more beneficial if we look at improving the whole area, and if we get this, great. But if not, we can set ourselves up for success in the future.
I just have one more question. In similar-sized Uh, in similar sized projects to this, what does the rent typically run for these units and other places where they've had similar projects? Or do we not know that yet? Will that be something further down the line?
I believe it's Hartsfield specific, but I'm not quite sure about that, that'd be something we learn down the line. It, it is gonna be regulated by the federal government what those, uh, that rent is, uh, for the most part. If you are applying for any type of rental assistance, I'm not quite sure, but I can definitely find out for you.
They have a schedule that's already kind of published.
I'm not familiar with it exactly, but I can get those numbers for you.
Anything else before we vote?
One more thing, th- this would be, um, I guess a drop in the bucket on an eighteen million dollar project. Um, so would there be a chance it falls apart on just the, that drop in the bucket or would it really?
As far as what we're contributing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, uh, and so the, uh, this whole thing, as it's highly points, uh, dependent, our, our investment is not the, is not the holdup here, it's whether or not they can get tax credits. Um, the eighteen million dollars is not a true eighteen million dollars because again, it's funded by, uh, several different subsidiaries. So our, our only contribution here is literally equal to points, uh, up to five points. Uh, in fact, she emailed me while we're sitting here, uh, the person we're working with, and there's a chance for additional points because it is in a strategic investment zone, because it's, uh, located that, there's addition to get up to additional ten points. So it's, it's all a, uh, kind of a, essentially a game and who's gonna win. Uh, so the money is not so much the issue, it's the citizen or the city involvement in the project and how much, uh, can, um, support they're willing to give and that's what they base the points off of.
Got you.
I'll, I'll size that this needs some more goal of our strategic plan.
And, and to kind of further back up, just because if you guys were to vote in favor of this, it does not mean that this project will get the points it needs. Um, it does not mean that this one can get it and the one right next door might get it who doesn't have the point, one point from us at this point. It's, it's purely things that I, we, in my four years here, we've had projects every year come to us. Typically, um, around the Eighth Street area with city-owned property. And we have been reluctant to do that because we're working on improving that cemetery down there to encapsulate that. Once that's done, we can start looking at that thing. But for the most part, these are projects are happening all across the state. And it's just whether or not the city, um, it's zoned appropriately and it's in the right area.
So what's the deadline on this, for this letter of support?
So, uh, we did find out the deadline for the app, for the letter of support only is April, uh, fifteenth. So we are right in there, uh, for that. Uh, this letter of support again is not, it's only binding as far as if the project is, uh, moves forward in the tax credits. Um, and I'm not sure exactly when that is, they do plan if they were to be awarded on the fifteenth or whenever after that, they do plan on the later this year, um, construction date, because the property is under contract and also fully ready to be built.
And at that point, would they come before council? If they, if they, um, get the tax credits that they need?
They would not need to come for council for anything, uh, they would go through our, they'd be underneath the city zoning and building standards for any type of building because it is an approved area, it's, these, these type of apartments are approved in that area. So as long as they're meeting all the building standards and of course our zoning laws, which we would be very careful to make sure they are. Uh, they, they would be moving forward with that, so there'd be no need for them to go forward, council would be like any other development going forward. But you'll be fully aware of it.
Ready for a vote?
I'd just like to say that I'm, I am probably not ready for a vote, but, um, but I feel like there's been a lot of discussion and I'm not sure I'm, I'm comfortable voting at this point, uh, um, that's just my opinion.
Well, we've got a, a highly qualified, uh, housing project that meets one of our strategic objectives.
Though I fully understand that we, we definitely have a huge need for housing.
Wha- 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 well, I think we need to go back into what it is we're voting on. This is not giving a thing at the moment. I think we kind of got off track. We're just saying, hey, we're open for business.
This is not approving the project at all. The project has already been approved under the zoning laws. All you're doing is that you're, uh, you are supporting, uh, investment in infrastructure. Uh, with a project that meets all the specified goals and objectives under our comprehensive plan, our strategic investment plan and also our, uh, needs for currently under city. Now, you do not have to vote, you can certainly vote no to this, it's not a problem. At some point, we will need to make these investments anyway.
Daniel, who, what departments of the city would have oversight of this project?
So, uh, under, it'd be through my office, of course, and then planning and zoning and public services. And fire and police and everyone else who touches everything that we do here.
But if they comply, the answer, council will act, we'll have really no say-so as long as they comply to zoning and everything else.
Absolutely.
Because they're the ones investing the money, so, you know, if she expects to put eye roll stamp on it before they go forward, that's not gonna happen.
No, it's, it's not anything like that, this is just, it, think of it as any other development that's happening.
Right.
Um, the Humane Society right next door. That was not a decision of council, you guys already decided that with the zoning. It was allowed in the zoning and all this is, is you're not approving a workforce housing development. All you're doing is looking at potential, making some improvements, similar to what we did to make Bay Road possible. When we did the thirty-six homes, when we extended the water lines across from the, uh, uh, nursing home across that two hundred feet of water line to do that, or a hundred feet of water line. It's similar to doing anything with housing that makes sense for us, what we need at this time. And workforce housing, while it does unfortunately just have some negative connotations, this is not that, it's not section eight housing. This is something that will help, uh, a lot of people. That's why we're, the city staff is in favor of it to move forward because it meets a need that we just so desperately do. But again, city council is under no obligation to make a recommendation tonight to approve this. Um, it's just something that at some point, we definitely will be looking at infrastructure improvements in that area. That's just a general fact.
Fresh, my man, would the Bay Road come to us for loss?
They came to us for a kind of development incentive to make the project work. And so this is very similar, it's just, this is a, this is another way of doing it, but it's strictly, uh, dead, uh, dictated by what the federal government makes as a point system.
They didn't have to play the federal tax credit game.
Correct.
They were able to invest their own money, this is, this is, the only thing that's happening here is. Exactly. Um, anytime there's an, uh, infrastructure improvement, that is how the city is able to leverage growth is through infrastructure. That is our bread and butter, that's what we're good at. Uh, I think we're very good at it, but that is what we are here to do. And so when it comes to, um, infrastructure improvements, all this is saying is that there's a point tied to it in this one. I, I, I would definitely say if we had a private company coming here and looking to build these number of apartments, I'd be coming to you with a request for funding for that as well, it just wouldn't have a federal point tied to it.
Well, I'm just wanting to make sure that we understand this is still a business decision. It's not like we're counting points and just saying, hey, here's some money. It's not what this is saying, saying we're open for business, we can say it in a number of ways. It's very, very cut dry and simple. Whether or not they go there, something's going to happen. We want to direct what happens. Therefore, saying, hey, we'll do X, Y, and Z just says, hey, come here and look at us, that's the main thing. We're not just kind of opening up the checkbook. This is a sound decision before anything's done, staff has done it before, they examined the numbers down to the T. And there's history in our books to see that. We're not slinging around checkbook, we're just saying, look at us. We're saying, come be a part of what it is, if somebody's going for money and a letter is all they need to get it and they want to bring it here, let's get all we can get.
Yeah, we got, we gotta grow. And, and we, I, I just wanted to know if they had to come before council or not. I'm not against that, I ju- I just want to make sure that the departments, um, will have the oversight that they need so that we don't get.
That's right.
Broke up again, but I'm all for it.
I think one of the main thing is transparency, though, like, I was only, I just heard about in the last day or two. So I think in the future, we, we have discussions.
I mean, to be fair, we, well, not these two, but the rest of us have heard about it since last year.
Haven't seen that, so I was kind of like surprised to read it. I missed that memo, I don't know.
Well, I mean.
It, 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 it's come in the form of other companies, that, that property has been up for market. It, it hadn't just come one way. Somebody has a plan, there is a potential contract negotiation, now it's a larger conversation. But there have been plans from other people in the past, that's all. We just got a name and a company attached to it, that's not what we've seen before, that's the main thing.
Anything else? We have a motion on the floor to, uh, approve resolution oh four twenty-four oh two, are we ready to vote on that motion?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving resolution oh four twenty-four oh two, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four?
Three. I abstain.
Okay. You got, uh, that reported clerk, do you need clarification? So motion.
It's three, three.
Oh, it's three, three, okay, well, the, um, what's the term for that?
Defeated.
Most defeated. Are there any other motions for resolution oh four twenty-four oh two? All right, moving on to item nine, resolution oh four twenty-four oh three.
All right, there you go, all right, it's approval of not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from previously obligated American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for a master plan. And as to further explain, this is, as we talked about in our Harts Vision Plan, it's a strategic plan we had in twenty twenty-five. Uh, we are looking at updating our master plan for the city of Hartsfield. The last one we did was in twenty eighteen, that, uh, information did go into our comprehensive plan for twenty thirty. But as we've noticed across the board, anything pre-COVID, we really need updated numbers for anything. So what this primarily is doing, and for the price of a hundred and fifty with twenty-five hundred thousand dollar contingency for travel and the other related expenses up to, uh, the, it will host a, uh, housing and market study, which we so desperately need. It will also host shirets for, uh, two specific projects, Sixth Street and Fourth and Railroad, which are two, uh, focus areas that were identified in that plan. And also will develop a master plan out of that, uh, based on that information, the housing study across the, so this is a, I believe, a great investment for the city of Hartsfield to move forward in twenty twenty-four. Any information that we get in this plan can be used in the update for twenty twenty-five as required for the comprehensive plan for twenty thirty comprehensive plan. So it's just getting ahead of the game and put us in a good position to answer questions for developers coming in saying, what exactly do you guys need? Um, you guys budgeted thirty, three hundred thousand dollars for plans, a hundred and fifty was for Fourth and Railroad, a hundred and fifty was for Sixth Street. So we feel like we actually were able to, um, use the best ki- uh, case by combining the plans together as we discussed. And that way we can get it more bang for our buck. The group I selected, uh, is Bordeaux Group. They were involved in the twenty eighteen plan, they were involved in the Clemson Extension Plan, I believe they did for Sixth Street. They helped us with the comprehensive plan for twenty thirty, they've also helped us with the, um, USDOT raise grant we just recently applied for. And so they're very familiar with the area, so it's easy for us to go to them and say, we need to update information and go for it. And the same people are still involved with it, so it's very exciting to be able to work with them again. And that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, um, I would entertain a motion to approve resolutions here for twenty-three oh three.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll hear a vote, all those in favor of approving resolution oh four twenty-four oh three, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have this resolution oh four twenty-three, twenty-four oh three is approved. Um, and that brings us to the end of our agenda and hearing no objection, we now end of our, thank you very much.